The Piscataway Township Planning Board meeting will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in the following ways. Notice posted in the Korean News. Notice posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building. Notice made available to the township clerk. Notice sent to the Korean News and the Starlet. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Waller? Courtney, can you see if the mayor is muted?
You got it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cahill?
Here.
Ms. Corcoran?
Here.
Ms. Saunders? No, we can't hear you, Carol. Reverend Kenny? Courtney? Mr. Bash- Basher? Ahmed?
Yes, I'm here. Hi.
Hi. Madam Chair?
Here.
Mr. Foster? And Mr. Atkins?
Here.
Okay. Will everyone please prepare to salute the flag? The flag is over my right shoulder.
Okay. You can hear me, I guess?
I can hear you now, Reverend Kenny. Okay. I pledge allegiance-
allegiance to the flag-
of the United States of America- and to the republic- for which it stands- one nation- under God- indivisible- with liberty- and justice for all. We have the swearing in of the professionals, please.
Okay. Can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony about to give you the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Barlow, are there any changes to our agenda tonight?
Yes, Madam Chair. Number thirteen, the amended resolution for the Yates matter. That's going to be carried until the June fourteenth meeting. That's the only change I'm aware of.
Okay. That's so noted for the record. Can I have a motion to pay the duly audited bills?
Madam Chair, Don Corcoran, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second. Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roll the call, please.
Mayor Waller? Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny? Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Item number eight, adoption of resolution to memorialize action taken at April twenty- April twelfth, twenty twenty-three. And so-
Madam Chairman, I'd like to adopt the resolution to memorialize taken at the April twelfth- to twenty twenty-three. Application twenty-two PB zero-six zero-seven V.
Um, do I have a second?
Don Corcoran also.
Don Corcoran. Motion. Make the second of the motion.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders, we're getting a little bit of feedback. Could it be because you have two open ones? Maybe you need to meet one of them?
But I closed one, you couldn't hear me.
Oh.
Yeah, but it's a bad echo, Carol. So maybe you could lower one down, maybe?
I tried that, you couldn't hear me.
Well, don't talk too much.
I'll do it again, yeah.
We'll take what we can get.
Exactly. All right. Number nine.
Um, do we have item B?
No, B, B turned into thirteen and thirteen got adjourned.
There was a revised agenda.
All right. Thank you. Item number nine, adoption of the minutes from the regular meeting of April twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
Now she's mute. Can't win. Maybe someone else can make a motion for the minutes.
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny? Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes. Okay. Item number ten. Twenty-three PB oh-seven slash oh-eight V is in-
We can hear you.
Yeah, I can hear anybody.
Okay. Can I, can you hear me now?
I can hear you, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Loud and clear.
AA Diner LLC. This matter is being represented by Mr. Dash. Would you proceed, sir?
It's Mr. Stahl, Madam Chair.
Madam Chairman, I am here on Katie Draper, LLC.
Yep. I'm aware of that, Mr. Dash. Yeah, it's Mr. Stahl's matter, Madam Chair.
Okay.
AA Diner.
Oh, Mr. Stahl.
Thank you, Tom. Jim, if I may, Madam Chair, Jim Stahl, S-T-A-H-L. The firm is Boris Golden Foley, Vignola-Hymen Stahl in North Brunswick. And I'm pleased to be here this evening. I don't know what, you know, Tom, when you did everything, everyone got a little bit skewed. Because I'm, I'm here twice, one under George Fairfield and one under myself. I don't know whether you did it or what. It's a little-
I can, I can promise you, I did nothing.
I know I didn't. Okay. It's probably Dawn's fault. All right, if I may.
He definitely did it.
No, that's, that's the TV guy, George. Somehow, yeah, I don't know.
All right, I'm Jim Stahler. I represent AA Diner. I have two witnesses tonight. I have the client who will describe what the services he provides as a all-American diner. And I have an architect. And hopefully Dawn will be able to share the plans which I sent her earlier today. Because I'm a little like Tom Barlow. I know how to use computers, but I never passed that lesson about sharing documents. And my architect is on the road, so he didn't have a full computer available. And now, I just want to advise the board, this is, when I started this project, I sent to Dawn the proposal for a change in tenancy. She indicated properly that because of the change in use from what was a retail use to a restaurant, the parking changed and therefore we would need a variance. What we are here tonight for is a preliminary and final site plan approval. And they see variance. I will tell you that we're wait, we're requesting a waiver from any site plan because nothing is going to be done on the outside with the exception of the signage, which would be consistent with Piscataway's ordinance. And I can tell you that the items in Henry's, Henry Hinterstein's memo dated April twenty-five, two thousand twenty-three can all be accomplished either by way of my client or the Centennial Shopping Center management. Now, I would indicate, and I, I don't think it's an issue, but I will leave that to Mr. Barlow, whose opinion I do respect. I do not have a planner. And the reason I do not have a planner, I felt was almost insulting to the board. Because this, as you may recall, an existing shopping center, existing uses, with the exception of one change of use. So the parking is about twenty-five hundred and twelve existing. And by the change in the use, it does change the total parking. But I just don't see, I mean, it's something that this board and its expertise and its experience, I think, can, can pass judgment on without a planner lecturing them with regard to this change of parking. So if I now can proceed, Dawn or Laura, you have my affidavits of publication and service. Does this board have jurisdiction?
The board has jurisdiction, Mr. Stahl.
Thanks, Tom. And I also acknowledge receipt of Mr. Reinerstein's report dated April twenty-one, two thousand twenty-three, which I will address with the architect at the end of the presentation, assuming that's the way that the chair wants to proceed. Madam Chair, may I proceed?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Ahmed, please raise your right hand.
Yeah.
You disappeared. Oh, I'm sorry, not- I have two Ahmeds here, it's okay.
Which Ahmed are we talking about?
Ahmed Wasim?
Yes, yes, okay, it's right here.
That's your client, right, Mr. Stahl?
Yes, but I don't see him.
He's the-
There he is.
There he is.
The good-looking guy with the beard. All right.
Thank you.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes. Can you please raise your right hand? Sorry, I'm going in. Do you swear that the testimony about to give you the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
All right. Spell your first name and your last name, just for the record. I don't know if we did that yet, go ahead.
My first name is Ahmed and last name is Wasim.
Spell your last name for the record.
W-A-S, like sugar, E-E-M.
All right, Ahmed, I've been calling you by your first name since you and I know each other a long time. First of all, are you the principal member of AA Diner?
Yes, sir.
And that diner is what you intend to put in the Centennial Shopping Center, correct?
Yes, sir.
And you have a proxy, how many other diners do you have in New Jersey?
I have actually four diners.
And you've been in the business? I'm sorry.
New Jersey, I have three, and Pennsylvania, I have one.
Thank you. I knew I missed one somewhere. And how long have you been in the diner business, sir?
About fourteen years.
All right, and you're familiar, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And you're going to be, you may not be on site at this location, but you have the overall responsibility for the operation, is that correct?
Yes.
And the staff that you're going to have, how many staff are you going to have full-time?
Uh, four people.
And who will those be? What are they going to be?
A manager, a, a, a full-time chef, a cook, and a couple of waitresses, probably.
And the facility, as I've indicated, is an American-style diner, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And you're going to, well, in addition to having sit down, and I'll get to the seats in a minute, you're going to also have takeout and you're going to have internet ordering, is that correct?
Yes.
There's, this may be obvious, but I have to ask you for the record, there's no drive-in or drive-up, is that correct?
No.
And the location is where there had been a retail use before, is that correct?
Yes.
And you have, you're going to be operating seven days a week, is that correct?
Yes.
And seven AM to seven PM, is that correct?
For now, yes.
For now. Those, thank you, that's, so you may, depending on how much people like your food and your operation, it could become more or it could become less, am I correct?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Stahl, what were the hours?
Seven to seven.
Seven to seven, thank you, sir.
Thank you. And, and questions had come up with regard to garbage and recycling. I know there's an enclosure that is the dumpster enclosure. And you're aware that that will have to be fixed or reconstructed either by you or the landlord, is that correct?
By the landlord, yes.
Right. And with regard to the recycling and the garbage, how will that be picked up?
Both once, once a week.
By the same hauler?
Yes, Republic Services.
And how many, how many days a week is that pickup, one or two?
Two.
If, all right. Now, with regard to loading, you are a diner, are there loading doors in the back of the facility?
Um, not exactly, it's like in a little alley. We have to walk a little bit. It's two stores away in the back, yes.
And just give me, so the board understand, are there going to be any tractor-trailer deliveries as you are aware of?
Yes.
All right, how many times a week?
At least three times a week.
Well, let's go back again. I used the word tractor-trailer as opposed to straight job or a box truck. What kind of truck is going to deliver?
Not the sixteen-wheeler, but it will be a truck, like full-size truck.
Right, that's why I asked you the question. Because I said tractor-trailer, you said there is no intent, and I'm not trying to lead you too much, but there's no intent to have a sixteen-wheeler, is that correct?
Yes, it can.
I'm sorry.
It cannot.
These would be bakery refrigerated for dairy products and regular food, is that correct?
Yes.
And how many trucks per week total do you anticipate delivering food?
Uh, between four to five.
Four to five over a seven-day period, is that correct?
Yes.
And to the extent you can, do you advise the vendors to come at a certain time of day?
Well, early, before twelve o'clock, twelve noon.
Before twelve noon, thank you. Uh, hold it. Give me one second here. And as you and I discussed, you're going to make sure that people from your staff periodically go outside and make sure that they pick up all litter and other items of garbage that people may disrespect the shopping center and put in the garbage, is that correct?
Yes.
And you're going to have one shift or two shift on the seven to seven?
Uh, one, we try to stay within, yes, one shift only.
All right, if you have to, you'll break to two, is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah, maybe kind of, it's only twelve hours. Operation really starts within, no, no later, no earlier than eight-eight-thirty. So maybe the manager will be the only one, will be there earlier, and the rest of it's going to be one shift for nine to ten hours, yes.
And the part of the takeout that we were discussing before, that would be Uber DoorDash and Grubhub, Uber Eats, those type of facilities, is that correct?
Yes.
And you use them at your other locations in New Jersey and Pennsylvania, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Let me, I, I want to use the one in North Brunswick. Do you know how many seats you have in that facility?
Uh, forty-nine.
Forty-nine?
No, no, sorry, no. In North Brunswick, I have three hundred seats.
How many?
Three hundred.
Three hundred? Well, I didn't, you know, I didn't realize that. And you don't know how many parking spaces you have in that parking lot?
I have approximately a hundred and fifty.
One fifty? And do you ever have, I'm sorry, I thought so, saying, do you ever have any problems with regard to parking or over-parking in that facility?
No.
And there's also, I get, because you have in the back and you have in the front, is that correct?
Uh, it's all around the property, mostly, most of them on the front.
And, but of the three hundred, you also have dining rooms or, or what do you call it, help me, event rooms, is that correct?
Up to sixty people, yes.
All right, so you don't, you don't fill, I'm only using it as a comparison, Madam Chair. You, you don't fill three hundred seats, you wish you would, but you don't, do you, in that facility?
No, never happened.
All right, now, let's come to Piscataway. Now, Piscataway, you're going to have tables, is that correct?
Boots and tables, yes.
Boots and tables, you're also going to have a counter, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
And what is your anticipated number of seats in that facility?
Forty-nine.
And that includes the, the bar, I think you called it a juice bar, the regular tables and the booths?
Yes, including.
Would you, you inter, I mean, I interrupted you. What, what was the bar again?
Counter, they call it, counter.
Oh, it's regular counter?
Yeah.
All right. I thought it was something special that you named it. As this is my last question before the board asks, have I missed anything that you want to tell the board about your operation?
I think we covered almost everything, yes.
Well, that's my, that's my job. But you have the experience and forty-nine seats, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Do you remember what was there before? I know you may not, I-
Men's, men's warehouse. It was a men's warehouse, clothing place.
Oh, was it a men's warehouse or a clothing clearance?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So that's all I have, Madam Chair, of this witness.
Members of the board, do you have any questions of Mr. Ahmed Wasim?
Um, Madam Chair, Don Corcoran, just want to get clarification on the number of seats. Because on your plan, it shows that you're going to have forty-six seats. And I know you testified you're going to have forty-nine. Just want to make- forty-nine?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I think, Dawn, I think that the architect may be able to confirm that Mr. Ragab, but he'll be on next. I had the same question, the number shifted a little bit, but we'd rather go for more than less, so there's no misunderstanding.
And you know what, it really doesn't affect regardless when we apply the parking requirement, it still comes to nineteen regardless if it's forty-six or forty-nine. But again, just wanted it clarified, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any, may I have my second witness?
Any other questions from this witness, members of the board? If not, we can open it to the public.
Okay.
Actually, I take that, Madam Chair, if I may, it does, I do take it back. It would require one additional parking space if it was forty-nine seats opposed to forty-six, so.
So Dawn, just to clarify, the diner requires twenty seats if it was a standalone, twenty parking spaces if it was a standalone business, correct?
If it was standalone in terms of, are you saying retail, Tom?
No, no, no. If it was, if it was just a diner, wherever it is, it would require twenty spots based on forty-nine seats?
Correct.
Okay. And just so the board's aware, there's two thousand five hundred and twelve spots on this site. And under the parking calculation for the whole site, it would, it would require now two thousand five hundred and forty-seven spots. So, under, what?
Actually, so there was an error on the plan, you always have to round up. And I know Ron called this out in his report as well as in my zoning report, we both did. So really, the requirement would be two thousand five hundred and fifty-four if there was forty-nine seats. So-
Okay.
Just go off of Ron's report and my report and Mr. Stahl's application.
Okay, because Ron had, anyway.
Well, and, and, and just to build on what Mr. Barlow was saying, this, this is a lot of spots.
There's, there's more than sufficient parking on this site.
Okay. I just wanted to make it clear that regardless of the use, though, there are still only about twenty-five hundred and change spots. And this still requires twenty-five hundred and change spots, that's-
Mm-hmm, right.
And I, so I'm sorry, we, we kind of jumped on you there, Madam Chair. I think you had opened it up to the public for questions. I don't know if you, I don't know if you want to wait till all of his witnesses go and then open?
I'm so we can, for right now.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow, puts it into perspective, that's for sure.
Okay.
Madam Chair, do you want me to put my second or you want to open it up for each witness? Whatever you want, of course.
I'd like to open it up for each witness.
That's fine.
So, and we won't get, you know, cross, cross questions. Ms. Buckley, do you see anyone in the, in the?
Well, you have to ask them, Madam Chair, if anybody has.
Does anyone in the public wish to respond to this witness? Would you please press the button to show, show your hand?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Close to the public, okay. You may proceed, Mr. Stahl.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ashraf, why don't you raise your right hand?
Uh, Ms. Saunders, or do you want me to?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes. Okay, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony about to give we the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
My name is Ashraf Ragab, R-A-G-A-B.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ashraf, are you a licensed New Jersey architect?
Yes, I am.
For how long have you been so licensed?
Twenty-two years.
And where did you have your education?
Uh, City College of New York, nineteen ninety-four Bachelor of Architecture.
Have you been qualified as a licensed architect in other municipalities, zoning boards and planning boards? Thank you. Madam Chair, I asked if Mr. Ragab be qualified as a, an architect?
He is so qualified to testify for this board.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All right, Ashraf, briefly, you designed the interior of the facility, is that correct?
Yes.
And I don't know if we need to plan right now, it's, the board has it. There are no exterior changes proposed with the exception of the sign, which would be consistent with Piscataway requirements, am I correct?
That's correct, yes.
We're not looking for any variances would be on a directory or however sent the shopping center. And Ahmed do the deal, is that correct?
Yes.
Let's, just so Dawn has the right number. Inclusive of tables, booths and the counter, how many seats are there?
Forty-six. I mean, what we're showing on the drawings are forty-six, but we are including three staff in the, in the occupancy. So the total occupancy we are showing on the drawings is forty-nine, but that includes the staff.
Oh, thank you very much. So it's forty-six patrons and three for staff, that's where you came up to your forty-nine. I'll leave it to Dawn to do the calculation now on that one. Uh, is, we have a typical kitchen, men and ladies bathroom, seats. Other than that, this is what I would call a typical New Jersey diner floor plan, is that correct?
That's correct.
Probably televisions for news and sporting events on the walls, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, anything unusual from this facility from that owned by Mr. Wasim and other municipalities, including the North Brunswick Oasis?
No, it's booths, tables and some, and a juice bar or a counter, as you called it, with some stools on it. It's just typical of any diner establishment.
All right. I don't think there was anything in the CMA report. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Mr. Stahl, did you want to share the exhibits or no?
I, I gave it to Dawn. No, no, Tom, I, I don't see any reason. Oh, you have it?
I have it, yeah. That's why I was just asking.
All right, I don't think so.
Okay.
So the only, the only note I would make is, I made side calculation for parking. I came up with twenty-four, five thirty-four required. Uh, but again, it's, it's quite a large site, so I might have missed something. Somebody had said twenty-five forty-something, somebody had says twenty-five fifty. Uh, but the, the bottom line is, this particular application only is responsible for eight additional parking spots out of, uh, out of deficiency of the whole site. So we need eight parking spots more than what's assigned for this, for the previous use. Uh, and that's, that's what this variance is about.
Well, we never argue with Dawn with regard to the calculation, but just so we're consistent also, this shopping center does not have assigned parking spaces for the different tenants, am I correct?
Yes.
It's got the EV parking, it's got the handicapped, and it may have some other parking for, I don't, I haven't walked the site, but there may be some for pregnant women, I know that's a new thing, or for curb-side, but it's a, thank, okay, thank you. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Members of the board, do you have any questions of this witness?
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, it's Councilwoman Cahill, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Maybe, uh, I apologize, um, maybe Mr. Stahl can answer this. I thought that, and is this, it's only one level, right?
Yes, one floor, first.
Okay, so are, I, did I hear something about like a private parties or?
No, I'm sorry, that was my, I was comparing this site to a, a site in North Brunswick near my office called the Oasis that is also owned by Mr. Wasim. It's a larger facility with some party rooms or event rooms. I didn't mean to confuse, I just was trying to do some comparison.
I apologize, okay, so thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, to the members of- Um, to the members of the public, you are now can have the opportunity to question this, uh, witness. Would you please indicate by pressing the hand button on your computer, on your screen?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Close to the public.
Madam Chair, I just want to clarify one, one thing with, with Ron and Dawn, just so I'm clear, the variance therefore would be two thousand five hundred and twelve parking spots are present and proposed, whereas two thousand five hundred and fifty-three would technically be required. I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page.
What happens is when there's fractions, you have to round up.
Yep.
So that's why there was just a little bit of, um, you know.
Those, those lousy fractions. I had written twenty-five fifty-three required, twenty-five twelve existing.
Perfect. Okay, I just want to make sure that I had my numbers right. Thank you both.
Uh, I have only one, I'm sorry to interrupt again, but, uh, those two, twenty-five, uh, fifty-four are for the whole site. There's, uh, quite a number of establishments on that site. Project is only responsible for eight parking spots, not for forty parking spots. We, uh, it have assigned eleven parking spots and we need nineteen, so we need eight more. That's it.
I, I think that, that's very good for, for planning testimony to say that we only have a, you know, that, that's only the increase. I mean, you know, it's a big site.
Thank you, Ron.
Members of the board, you've heard the test, are you finished, Mr. Stoll? Would you like to make a summary?
Uh, no, no, the, the short application and everyone here, I, I know listens carefully.
I just wanted to afford you the opportunity to be heard. Uh, members of the board, you've heard this application, uh, what's your pleasure?
Madam Chair, uh, Dawn Corcoran, I'd make, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the application subject to the Piscataway staff report and subject to the CME report.
Do I hear a second?
Madam Chair, Reverend Kenny, I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes, yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Stoll.
Well, thank you very much. Have a good night and be safe.
You too. Item number eleven.
Okay.
Um, Madam Chair, this is Carol Saunders. I need to recuse myself from this application.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, I'll be back.
You are excused, you are excused.
Okay.
Excuse.
Um, item number twenty-two dash PB dash twenty-seven slash twenty-eight, via Zin Victor, KD Capital Ventures LLC. And now we have here from Mr. Dash.
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, good evening, members of the board, good evening. Uh, this matter, I, I represent, uh, the applicant, KD Capital Ventures LLC. This matter has been carried, uh, from the April tenth meeting of the planning board of Piscataway. Uh, we had previously provided sufficient legal notice. I understand a no notice was, uh, required to be provided again. Uh, we had previously, uh, by way of a brief recap, uh, provided the testimony from, uh, our, uh, licensed engineer and planner, Tony Gallo Aaron, with respect to the positive and negative criteria and the legal proofs with respect to the, the variances, uh, that are required. Uh, we also had, uh, explained the, the site plan in some, in some detail. Um, we are prepared, uh, tonight to answer any questions that may be, um, remaining from the board. Um, uh, but, um, with that, I don't want to burden, uh, the board's time if there are no, uh, specific questions. Uh, I understand the board had carried this meeting, uh, there were, uh, my notes reflect some notations from some members of the public, but, uh, uh, I believe that, um, from our perspective, that those issues, uh, should not be bearing upon this application. So I respectfully submit to the board for its consideration if it has any questions, uh, will be happy to answer that. I have, uh, Christian Queto, uh, engineer from Harbor Consultants, uh, on, on with me tonight, uh, to answer any questions. But, uh, I submitted respectfully, uh, Madam Chairwoman, uh, to the board for any questions.
Uh, Mr. Barlow is, uh, do you have any comments as to what Mr. Dash has said?
I, I don't have anything other than, Mr. Dash, did you say you have a different individual from Harbor, not Tony?
Yes, Tony couldn't be here, Tom, uh.
That's fine.
It's, uh, Christian, uh, Christian Queto, uh, Christian, you on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, can, can I just, out of an abundance of caution, let's swear him in.
Okay.
And just qualify him. That way, if there are any questions from the public that require his comment, we've done that.
Fine.
Okay.
Christian, please.
If you could, uh, state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Hey, my name is Christian Queto, last name is C-U-E-T-O.
And what's your professional address, sir?
My professional address is three twenty North Avenue East, Cranford, New Jersey, oh seven oh one six.
Okay, if you could raise your right hand, you swear the testimony, give before the board will be the whole truth?
I do.
Okay, do you want to just qualify him real quickly, Mr. Dash?
Sure, sure. Uh, Christian, if you could, um, please provide the benefit, uh, of your education to the board?
I graduated from NJIT with a degree in civil engineering. I've been practicing, uh, civil engineering, uh, for the past fifteen years. Um, I appeared up before many boards. I actually sit on the, uh, the Port, uh, Borough of Kenilworth as the Borough Engineer there. Um, and my license is in good standing.
Can you review the plans that are the subject of this application?
Yes, I have.
Madam Chairwoman, uh, Mr. Barlow, I submit, uh, Mr. Queto for any questions that may, may, that may potentially arise.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I, he, he can testify, okay.
Okay, uh, so, so Madam Chair, just to refresh the board's recollection, all the testimony was in with regards to this minor two-lot subdivision. Um, all of the testimony was received. There were some questions from some neighbors who I, who, if memory serves me, had utilized the property, the, the vacant portion of the property and had some questions they asked about their continued use of it, et cetera. Um, because there is a road opening, the, um, moratorium right now, the board thought it prudent to just, um, adjourn the matter one month to allow those individuals to explore their options. And if they wanted to come back, if they had any, uh, additional questions. Um, so I would think it's appropriate at this time, uh, Chairwoman Smith, if you want to either see if the board has any follow-up questions since last month and then open it to the public.
Agreed. Members of the board, is, are there any further follow-up questions that you might have on this issue? Okay, um, members of the public, I'm going to open it to you for comment. Anyone having a question, you may signify so by tapping the appropriate box on your screen to indicate you want to have a question, you have a question.
Yes, Madam Chair, there's, uh, JJHW.
Okay.
Is her hand raised?
Yeah, and just so the members of the public, anybody that wants to ask a question, I'm just gonna ask you to state your name, give us your address, and then I'm going to swear you in, and then you can have whatever questions or comments, okay? So, who is JJHW?
Joyce. Joyce Hancock Williams.
I'm sorry, Joyce Hancock.
Williams.
Williams. And is that W-I-L-L-I-A-M-S?
Yes.
And your address, Ms. Williams?
One fifty-five Park Avenue.
Okay, um, can, do you have a camera that you can put on?
Do you know what? I, I was trying to put my camera on, but I, I, for some, I wasn't able to get it to work, so I'm not really sure. But can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can. So, uh, y- you could raise your right hand, uh, and.
I will, I promise I will raise my right hand.
Okay, do you swear the testimony you give before this board will be the whole truth?
Absolutely.
Okay, and what would you like to tell the board, Ms. Williams?
Do you, I, I just want to, uh, go over some things. It's gonna take me a few minutes, not very long. Um, so let me just first say thank you for the opportunity to have my say. Uh, I love Piscataway. I've lived here all, all of my life, except for the years that I was in college earning my degree. And I lived in Pittsburgh for three years due to a work transfer. Now, at the last planning meeting, there was mention of the way the properties were divided. I can explain that because I know the history of those properties, so if you'll just give me, indulge me for about five minutes. Uh, Mr. MJ Jackson migrated north from Georgia, and he purchased property in this area because it reminded him of his southern roots. He owned property on Highland Avenue, Fisher Avenue and Hanson, from River Road to Hose Lane. In the blocks between Park Avenue, Fisher and Hanson, which run parallel, and the cross streets Deerfield and Foster, he owned property that he sold to relatives, and he sold it to them according to their family needs and what they could afford. And of course, this was prior to the zoning that we now have in place. So I hope that that answers the question on why the properties are aligned the way they are. His first home in New Brunswick Highlands, now known as Piscataway and referred to by insiders as The Heights, was a three-family dwelling on Deerfield Avenue. He and his wife Elizabeth lived on the top-floor apartment. A nephew Calvin Inman and his wife Sally lived on the second floor, and another niece, Beatrice Smith, and her husband Charles lived on the first floor.
Ms. Williams, Ms. Williams, I, I, I don't, I don't mean to cut you off, and I, and I don't mean to be, uh, rude in any way, but each, um, each speaker is limited to three minutes because.
I can, could, I'll be, I'll wrap it up then.
Uh, uh, yeah, the history doesn't really, I, I don't think that goes to the application. Okay, I just didn't want you to not get to talk about what's important to you.
You know what? The history is important because what I'm trying to have you see is that it was all relatives who owned the property, and he sold it to them according to their family needs and what they could afford. Because at the last meeting, there was comments on the way the properties were aligned. I, Mr. Jackson, when he purchased his, bought a new home, he purchased that property at one sixty-four Fisher Avenue. The lot in question was always used as his backyard. When he passed on, his son Dan moved into that house, and he made a garden out of that lot. So what I'm trying to illustrate is that it was never an unkept, unmaintained property. When Mr. Jackson could not take care of the property any longer, he hired a relative that has a landscaping business to maintain it. So the property was always maintained. It was never, uh, just this empty, uh, overgrown lot. So next door, the house at one seventy-nine Park Avenue that, uh, is currently owned by Mr. Rollins, Mr. Jackson's son, Lawton Jackson, lived in that house. He created a U-shaped driveway so that all the relatives in that immediate area could use it. My house being one of them, my father built this house in nineteen fifty-nine. So I've had use of that driveway, our, our family, since Mr. Jackson built the house. I want to illustrate that it was always maintained, that we, and, and I also want to say, because this was brought up too, and it was very insulting. We never squatted, we never used the driveway illegally or trespassed. It was property owned by family and meant to be used by the connecting homes. With all that said, my request to the zoning board is that they not make a decision based on a map with lines, numbers, that before the next meeting, they take a look at the actual property and ask themselves the question if they lived in either house adjacent to this lot, one seventy-nine or one fifty-five, would they want a house built on it that close? It's my understanding that zoning laws were created to regulate land use and development to protect residents from crowded living conditions. And I feel that this house would cause more congestion and it just, it would be a crowded living condition for the people in this block. There are approximately eighty-one homes on Park Avenue, and only six of them have driveways that only accommodate one car, and there's only about four people who only own one car. Most of the residents have two or more, so Park Avenue is already a nightmare with parking. Lastly, I will conclude. On the plaque outside the municipal building, there's a quote that says, "Those who have failed the veneration for their predecessors expect veneration from those who follow." Thank you for listening.
Bless you, Chair. Bless you.
Madam Chair, there's one more person, Jeffrey Williams.
Yes, Mr. Brick, Mr. Williams, would you step forward, please, figuratively?
Can you see me and hear me?
I can hear you, sir, but I cannot see you.
And I don't know why, because I have my camera on, I don't know why.
Okay.
Um. But I will raise my hand, and you can swear me in if you'd like.
I, I will, one second. It's Jeffrey, J-E-F-F-E-R-Y?
Yes.
Williams, W-I-L-L-I-A-M-S?
Yes.
And your address, sir?
Uh, one five five Park Avenue in Piscataway.
If you raise your right hand, you swear the testimony you give before this board will be the whole truth?
I do.
What would you like to tell the board, sir?
I, I just actually have two questions for the board. So, uh, in the last meeting, I know the mayor said there is a moratorium of cutting into the street, into the sidewalk. And I guess, I don't know if my question is to the board or to KD Capital. If you approved the lot to be subdivided, does that mean that they can't build a house until the timeframe for the moratorium is up? Or are they asking for an exemption to the moratorium?
This board cannot grant exemptions to the moratorium. It doesn't have that power. Um, the moratorium is on, I believe, Fisher Avenue until October of twenty-five and Park Avenue until September of twenty-nine. This board does not have the authority to grant, um, an exception to that.
Alright.
So they, the subdivision can be perfected, um, and that's, that's the relief the board, the, the applicant is seeking. A subdivision and variances.
Alright, um, because that was my only concern, because currently we have a house, uh, at three eighty Park Avenue, which I believe the board granted variance from, for. Um, it's actually was built in twenty thirteen. It doesn't have a driveway or a garage, but currently that house is still not finished and unoccupied, and that's ten years. So my concern was if you, if you granted this, would they build a house here now that they couldn't technically finish until twenty twenty-nine?
I, I can't answer that question, sir. It sounds like it would be a, a bad business decision, but I can't, I can't answer that question.
Alright.
Hold on a sec, Mr. Barlow, if you want, I can answer that. I think the, uh, the housing question that Mr. Williams was speaking about, uh, was under construction, and then it went into foreclosure. And the end, or it's that somebody else has purchased it at this point, and is looking to finish it, from what I understand, from the township attorney.
And, and they are, I may, they also had to go back to the zoning board, and they did just receive approvals because they had a couple of, um, setback issues that had to be addressed. So those, um, again, that was just approved by the zoning board just maybe a month or two ago. So you should see some work proceeding on that whole.
I hope that answered your questions, Mr. Williams.
It is, I, yeah, it did.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
Uh, are there any other members of the public who wish to ask questions of this witness?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I see no hands at this time. It's now closed to the public. Um, you've heard all of the issues with reference, you've heard the commentary and response by Mr. Dash. Board members, what is your pleasure at this time as to the, uh, the approval of this application?
Madam Chair, Dawn Corcoran, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this application subject to the staff report, uh, dated March twenty-second to twenty twenty-three, with the additional comment, um, that the applicant be required to install a blank conduit line for the new home for future fiber optics. Um, that was discussed at the prior meeting, also subject to the, uh, Director of Public Works report and subject to the CME report.
Right, have a second.
Uh, Madam Chair, Reverend Kenny, I'll second.
Uh, Madam Chair, Reverend Kenny, I'll second that, uh, that this application be approved. I'll second that.
Thank you. Vote call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair, we thank, we thank, thank you and the board and
Thank you. Item number, um, twelve, twenty-three PB O-three slash O-four, Vias and Victor, Manuel Angulo and Miriam Valentin.
Good evening. My name is John Sullivan. I'm an attorney with the offices of Vastola and Sullivan, and I am representing the applicants. Um, I guess first we should just check to see that, um, the board has jurisdiction.
Yes, sir. I've, uh, seen the affidavit of service and publication, and the board does have jurisdiction.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Angulo and Ms. Valentine are the owners of both lots three and seventy-eight in block six oh three. Uh, the lot three is, the address is nineteen seventeen West Fifth Street, and lot seventy-eight is nineteen twelve West Seventh Street, and the properties do share a common rear property line. Uh, overall lot area is just over seventy thousand square feet. Zoning district is the R seven-five, and each lot is currently improved with a single-family dwelling. The proposal before you is to subdivide, um, let's start with lot three, is to subdivide lot three, uh, right down the middle and create two lots having, um, each size. Uh, plenty of lot area, thirteen thousand seven hundred and square, seven hundred and fifty square feet, uh, but the lot width will only be fifty feet for each lot, so we would need a variance for that. Uh, there would also be a lot line adjustment, um, to add the rear of lot three to lot seventy-eight. Uh, the existing dwellings would remain on, uh, proposed lot three point O-two and seventy-eight point O-one, and a new single-family home is proposed to be constructed on proposed lot three point O-one. Uh, our planner will ask variances. We did send, uh, buy-sell letters to the owners of, uh, lots two and four. Um, they have been submitted to the board in advance. And, um, I did hear from Mr. Wright, who I believe is the owner of lot four, and, uh, he had, he was willing to consider selling some of his property, but it would only be the rear of his property as opposed to the frontage of his property, so it would not solve the lot with issue. Uh, our witnesses tonight are, um, uh, Mr. Angulo, I believe, um, and/or Ms. Valentine, uh, Mr. Druga, who is our licensed architect, Paul Fletcher, who is our engineer, and Nick Graviano, who is our professional planner. Plans that we submitted were the subdivision plan prepared by Fletcher Engineering dated July twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-two and floor plans and elevations prepared by Mr. Druga dated September sixth of twenty twenty-two. Um, if, if I could take a minute with the board in terms of classification of this subdivision, I originally looked at it as we're only creating one additional, so I thought it might be a minor. But based on my discussions with the, um, the zoning office, uh, it was classified as a major, and that is how we submitted it. Um, and we're here for preliminary, uh, major subdivision approval. I did notice in the CME report, um, it was viewed as a minor subdivision. So in reality, although we have three, uh, you know, two existing lots, we're creating a third, and we're doing a lot line adjustment. Um, you know, I would ask for the board's, uh, determination as to whether it be considered a major or a minor.
And, and speaking for CME, we have no problem with however you classify it. Those are valid points.
Dawn, what is the, your?
So the way we looked at it was anything over two lots is considered a major, um, subdivision, and because there was the creation of three lots here, that's why we considered it the way we did, um.
Based on that, Mr. Sullivan, I would suggest we go ahead as a preliminary major because that has how the board has, and the township hasn't interpreted it in the past. If three lots are being created, it's a major.
Fair enough. Um, yeah, I was just looking for some clarification on that, and we are, we are ready to proceed as such.
And, and Mr. Sullivan, just as you proceed, I've marked, just for the record, based on what you submitted, I marked as A-one, the April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three certified letter that was sent to lot four, block six oh three. Uh, I think, what did you say the owner's name was?
Uh, Mr. Wright.
Mr. Wright, um, who indicated he, he didn't want to sell part of the front. And I marked as A-two, the certified letter to the owner of three eighty-seven South Washington, which was lot two, block six oh three. So if you have any other exhibits going forward, we'll mark them as A-three, A-four, et cetera.
Thank you. Thank you.
Your witness.
Okay, um, Mr. Angulo or Ms. Valentin?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, we have to get you sworn in, Mr. Angulo.
All right.
Think you're muted, Carol.
Ms. Angulo, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony about to give will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Manuel Angulo.
Can you please spell it?
M.A.N.U.E.R. Angulo A.N.G.U.L.O.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Angulo, uh, you and, uh, Ms. Valentin are the owners of the property in question?
Yes.
And each of those properties, as they exist now, are developed with single-family dwellings?
Yes.
And, uh, who lives in each of those dwellings?
I live in, uh, nineteen twelve West Seventh Street. My daughter, uh, Andrea Angulo live in the Fifth Street.
And in connection with this application, if it were to be approved, you would, you would essentially divide, uh, lot three right down the middle to create two separate lots?
Yes.
And what do you propose to do with, um, with those two lots? Are you going to keep the, uh, the one home that exists now on there?
Yeah, the, the idea is I have three daughters, you know, and, uh, uh, I want, I wanna, the, the, the home is very expensive now. If I have a opportunity to, to make another home for my daughter, uh, beautiful. That's good for me and for my family.
Okay, so you would like to, to create it all and, uh, have the family live in each of the homes?
Yes.
Now, in connection with the plans, um, as we, we look over on West Seventh Street, there is a, uh, what I'll call a triangular piece that seems to be an extension of West Seventh Street, and your driveway currently runs through there. Is that correct?
Yes.
And how long has your driveway been there through that section?
Uh, I bought it, uh, two thousand, uh, yeah, two thousand and two. Uh, it still was the, the, a small driveway, driveway with a tree. What happened is, uh, one day, the, the old tree, the big tree, uh, came down and, uh, over to one car, and I went to the city. I, I, I got permission to cut that. After the, uh, after, uh, they, all, all permission was just, uh, bare work. After that, I was cleaning, I was making a driveway in that from the two thousand and two. Uh, I have the driveway. I'm using that, uh, that part of the, and, uh, the city, uh, property to my driveway.
Okay, when you bought the property back in two thousand and two, the driveway ran through that little section of land?
Yes.
And you didn't relocate it?
Excuse me?
Did, and you did not relocate the driveway at all, did you?
No.
Uh, those are the only questions I have for Mr. Angulo.
Uh, members of the board, do you have any questions of Mr. Angulo? Hearing no responses, you may call your next witness, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you. Uh, I would call our architect, Steve Druga.
Hi, Mr. Druga. Can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony about to give will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Steve Druga, D.R.U.G.A.
Thank you.
Registered architect.
Would you state your qualifications for the board, please?
Offices located at two fifty Stilton Road, Piscataway, New Jersey. Member of the American Institute of Architects and New Jersey Licensed Architect with license and good standing.
And I would ask that Mr. Druga be so accepted?
Has he testified in any boards within New Jersey or this Middlesex County?
Yes, I've testified many times at Piscataway, Denellen, Greenbrook, Edison, and North Plainfield.
Thank you. You've named, he can testify as a, as an expert in this matter.
Thank you. Mr. Druga, you prepared the, uh, plans for the proposed new home on lot three point O-one?
That was correct.
And could you briefly describe for the board the, uh, floor plans and the elevations?
Yes, the proposed residence is a four-bedroom, two-story home with a one-car attached garage. The front of the house has a, uh, seven-foot covered porch, and there's a deck at the rear of the property, twelve-by-sixteen-foot deck proposed. The house is a thirty-three-foot four by forty-five foot. That forty-five foot includes the covered front porch, and the thirty-three foot, thirty-three foot four also includes the front porch. The first floor contains a living room, family room, kitchen, and dining area, and, uh, bathroom.
I think Mr. Sullivan froze.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry?
Some of your last, last, your last testimony was frozen. Could you repeat your last two sentences?
If I can remember them.
Mr. Sullivan, you might want.
Yeah, you have an open, an open floor plan, kitchen, dining area and living room towards the front with a fireplace on the right side of, of the building. Uh, the garage is, uh, twelve feet by twenty-one feet, and it's on the left side of the pro, of the, of the house. You enter the, enter the foyer, and there's a stair going up. It's a two-story open area in the center of the house. Second floor contains four bedrooms, a master bedroom, master bath, and a main bath, and three other bedrooms. Sorry. Uh, there's also a, uh, all that downstairs to access the attic for storage. You, house sits on a basement. There's a base, a basement or a cellar, depending on which, uh, uh, definition you refer to. I think the board, Piscataway, uh, definition of a cellar is when half of its height is buried. More than half of its height is buried below ground. In this case, that, that is the condition. Uh, the house has a gable roof left to right, and the total height of the house approximately thirty-one and a half feet, all from grade.
Hey, Mr. Druga, and, um, uh, how do you feel that the, the proposed home, i- is it compatible with the neighborhood, in your opinion?
Yes, in my opinion, it is. There's very, uh, different houses in the area. In fact, the house next door is a two-story. In fact, this proposed house would probably be a little bit slower than the house next door, present existing house on the lot on the street. There are two fam, there are two stories. There were eight cons, and so it fits in perfectly with what's in the neighborhood.
And then I just wanted to direct you to the CME report dated April twenty-first of twenty twenty-three. Um, under planning comments, item four, I think you had stated that, um, the fireplace chimney projection is on the side of the house as opposed to the front?
That is correct. It's on the right side of the house in the living room area.
So that will not project into the front yard at all?
Correct.
And item six, I think you indicated the attic is solely for storage?
Correct.
And then you would, you would address cellar issue. Um, I did also wanted to direct your attention to Mr. Hinterstein's report, item number eight, with regard to the garage size. Can you, can you address that?
Yes, the garage size on the plan indicates, uh, as eleven foot four inches wide by twenty-one foot deep. The report, Henry, Mr. Hinterstein, would like the garage to be, um, twelve foot clear left to right and twenty foot deep. We're, so we're going to be twelve foot by twenty-one foot. It will amend the plan to suit.
Thank you. Uh, that's all I have for Mr. Druga.
Thank you. Um, members of the board, you've heard this testimony from Mr. Druga. Do you have any questions? Hearing no questions, um, I'd like to direct, address the members of the public, open it to the members of the public. If anyone in the public would like to ask questions of this witness, you can signify by raising your hand on your screen. Ms. Buckley, do you see any responses?
No one, Madam Chair.
Okay, closed to the public. Thank you. Okay.
Our next witness would be Paul Fletcher, our engineer.
Mr. Fletcher, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony about to give will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Just please state and spell your name for the record.
Yes, Paul J. Fletcher, F.L.E.T.C.H.E.R.
Thank you.
And Mr. Fletcher, would you state your qualifications for the board?
Yeah, I'm a professional engineer licensed in the state of New Jersey. I'm the principal of Fletcher Engineering and have been so for thirty-one years. I've been accepted as an expert in engineering, uh, in front of the, uh, Piscataway boards, uh, also Woodbridge, Edison, uh, Westfield, numerous boards over the thirty, thirty-one-year period.
Okay, and did you say your license is, uh, in good standing?
It is, yes.
And we would ask that Mr. Fletcher be so accepted?
He's accepted as a planner and.
I'll be testifying, uh, uh, as an engineer only this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Fletcher, you prepared the plans that have been submitted to the board, is that correct?
Yes, under my supervision.
And would you describe the, um, site as it exists and the proposal that's, uh, we're presenting to the board?
Certainly. Uh, there's two lots, lot three, uh, which faces, uh, West Fifth Street, and as you had mentioned, is a, an existing single-family, uh, dwelling and driveway on that property. Uh, they're a property with frontage on West Seventh Street. It also has a, a single-family dwelling. Uh, the applicant proposes to subdivide lot three. It will create two, uh, fifty-foot wide by two hundred and seventy-five-foot deep lots. Each would be, uh, in excess of thirteen thousand square feet. And the rear portion of lot three would be added, uh, to the property, uh, lot seventy-eight, uh, which, uh, has the, uh, home on West Seventh Street. And that property would end up being, uh, forty-two thousand five hundred and ten square feet. And as you had also mentioned, this is, uh, in the R seven-five zone or seventy-five hundred square feet it is wired. The applicant further proposes to construct a single-family dwelling on the newly created vacant lot on West Fifth Street. And, uh, as Mr. Druga had mentioned, it's a two-story, four-bedroom, uh, of a single-car garage. Uh, one of the comments, uh, I believe in the CME report was, is it possible to widen the driveway to eighteen feet to provide an extra parking spot? And that's agreeable to the client. Uh, we should do that. And I concur that, uh, the new house has a cellar. I did crunch the numbers, uh, clearly more than half the low, lowest level is, uh, uh, the low grade.
Mr. Fletcher, the plan that you were just referencing, that wasn't made just for this evening. That was part of the plans that were submitted, correct?
Yes, that's part of the, uh, Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, and, um, Mr. Fletcher, will there be adequate parking for two vehicles in the, uh, new home?
Yes, uh, I should. Yes, I should be able to park three in the new home. There'd be at least three on the existing dwelling facing West Fifth and at least three on the, three or more on the existing dwelling on West Seventh Street. Comply with all RSIS standards.
And are there any other site improvements that are proposed?
Just new curb cuts, repair if necessary of sidewalks and curbing. Mr. Hinterstein had requested that we have a paved driveway for at least the first 25 feet on the West Seventh Street. And the applicant agrees to that, and we will show that on revised plans. The driveway on the new home will be paved.
And with regard to the reports, the CME report dated April 21st of this year, is there anything in the comments there that we either cannot comply with or require any further discussion?
From an engineering point of view, I don't believe so.
And same with regard to Mr. Hinterstein's report of April 25th. Is there anything in that we either can comply with or requires further discussion?
No, we will comply with all his suggestions. I don't think there's anything that needs further discussion.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have for Mr. Fletcher.
Madam Chair, I have a question for Mr. Fletcher.
Go ahead, man.
Mr. Fletcher, the driveway on West Seventh, there's an irregular jog in the roadway, the county road.
Yes.
I'm assuming the driveway pavement's going to be from the person's property line.
The rest was from the sidewalk.
We're going to, Mr. Barlow, we're going to have to speak with the county engineering department on this because this has an irregular jog in the roadway.
I don't know if Mr. Fletcher cut out, or you had cut out, Mayor. Are you talking about West Seventh or the West Fifth Street?
West Seventh, Mr. Barlow.
Where there's that kind of notch in the roadway?
There's a notch in the roadway. We're going to have to figure that out, and we need to contact the county engineering department on that.
What is, just, is that?
Basically, it looks like the applicant, the applicant's using the county right of way as a driveway as part of the property.
I think?
I mean, I'm not blaming the property owner here, but it's irregular piece shape here.
Yeah, that's, I was going to ask you, Mayor, if it serves any other purpose or just at some point didn't get included as part of any of the adjacent properties, the applicant may also want to ask, see if they can purchase it from the county.
Well, I'll be honest with you, Mr. Barlow, I can envision possibly the next-door owner possibly, if they have enough square footage. I'm looking at the tax map right now. Sometime in the near future, they might want to come in to subdivide that right there.
Yeah, it's a, it is an odd shape.
I know. I mean, that's why I want to get the county engineering department input on this one. See how they want to handle this, because this might create problems in the future if somebody else tries to subdivide next door.
Or if the applicant, with regards to proposed Lot 7801, again, it's an odd-shaped lot, but it's over 40,000 square feet. So maybe as a condition of approval, Mayor, we could put some language in there that the applicant will reach out to the county engineer.
Well, they're going to have to because it's on a county road anyway. The county's, county engineering department's going to weigh in.
Yeah, okay. So that would be a condition of approval then, and they'd have to abide by whatever the county?
Yeah.
Reclaim the dues.
All right, well, we'll make sure that our engineers are going to speak with county engineers on this because this might be a template for something coming down the future here. But more importantly, Mr. Fletcher, pertaining to the new lot on West Fifth, the two lots that Mr. Hinterstein's asking to be remedied. My advice is you better come in for an opening permit very quickly because we may be going a million paving from Washington Avenue out to the next cross street out there sometime this paving cycle.
Thank you for that input.
I mean, sooner than later, because then you're under a moratorium.
Understood.
And I'm going to want to let that reflect, Mr. Barlow, that we'll have to say, you know, once the town pays it, they will be under a moratorium. So it behooves them to act within the next, you know, month or so to file a street opening permits with both the water and get its things stubbed out, both with water, gas, and everything else. I don't want this turning into a repeat of what happened up on Hose Lane West, Mr. Fletcher. You know what I mean?
Understand.
Okay. Someone muted?
Mr. Sullivan? Did you want to open to the public as to Mr. Fletcher?
Well, does the board have any questions? Other than the mayor speaking, do the board members have any questions?
If not, we'll? Madam Chair, I'm sorry. Just as with the prior application, Mr. Fletcher, would you agree that for the installation of that blank conduit line for the future fiber optics?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. We're now open to the public. If anyone in the public wishes to ask questions of this witness, you may now indicate by raising your hand on your screen.
No one, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Close to the public. Mr. Sullivan, is that it? Can we?
Our final witness would be Nicholas Graviano, he is our planner.
Okay, fine.
Do you swear that the testimony about to give will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Yes, my first name is Nicholas with an H, last name Graviano, G R A V as in Victor, I A N O.
Thank you.
I'm a partner and planner with Graviano and Gillis Architects and Planners with a business address of 101 Crawford's Corner Road in Holmdell, New Jersey.
And Mr. Graviano, would you state your qualifications for the board?
Certainly, Mr. Sullivan. I hold a bachelor's degree from Rutgers University, a master's degree in city and regional planning from Rutgers University, and a law degree from the Temple University School of Law. I'm a professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I also hold an AICP certification. I've testified before over 100 boards in 18 different counties, including Corteret, Highland Park, New Brunswick, Woodbridge, and the Piscataway zoning board.
We would ask that Mr. Graviano be so accepted?
Is so accepted.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me, board.
Okay, Mr. Graviano, you are familiar with the application plans, the site, the area, and the ordinance and master plan?
Yes, sir.
And can you describe the proposal and the required variances?
Certainly. The board has heard through the applicant and the applicant's engineer and architect the intended plans for the site. Essentially, the applicant is combining Lots 3 and 78, both of which presently contain single-family detached dwellings. The combined property has a total area of 70,011 square feet, which equals roughly 1.6 acres. Of that 40,500 square feet roughly is from Lot 3, and 29,508 square feet is from Lot 78. The applicant is proposing, as Mr. Sullivan stated previously, to essentially split Lot 3 in the middle and cut off part of the back to give it to the remainder of Lot 78. The proposed lot sizes for Lot 3.01 and 3.02 are 13,750 square feet apiece, which is 6,250 square feet larger than what the ordinance requires for a single-family detached lot in a zone. Additionally, the proposed lot size for Lot 78.01 is 42,510 square feet, a little bit less than an acre, which is 35,000 square feet larger than what is required by code. The applicant does require relief due to the exceptional shape and size of the lot. Specifically, relief is required for proposed Lot 3.01 in that a 75-foot lot width and lot frontage is required, and a lot width and lot frontage of 50 feet is proposed. It's a similar situation for proposed Lot 3.02, which needs both of the aforementioned variances. Additionally, proposed Lot 3.02 will contain the existing single-family detached dwelling, which is on the site, requiring the need for a couple of setback variances due to the existing conditions on the property. The first being in that the existing house is setback 7.6 feet, whereas eight feet is required, and there is an existing deck which is five feet from the property line. Additionally, the ordinance requires eight feet for an accessory structure, whereas 7.5, eight feet are existing and proposed. Additionally, for proposed Lot 78.01, there's a 75-foot lot width required. The applicant proposes 70 feet in width. Additionally, requires a paved driveway. You did hear that the applicant will pave the first 25 feet of the driveway. However, there will be a portion that remains gravel, so we're going to request the variances. Also of note, we had the driveway discussion earlier. The applicant certainly in this scenario could relocate the driveway outside of that triangle area if that's the board's preference. Certainly, all the aforementioned variances can be granted under the C1 criteria by reason of the exceptional narrowness, shalliness, or shape of the specific piece of property. You saw when I displayed the proposed subdivision plan, they're certainly in irregular shape with the combined lots. In this case, strict application would result in peculiar and exceptional practical difficulties or undue hardship upon the applicant. I would like to note that the combined properties are long and deep and 10 times larger than what's required in the zoning district. With respect to the negative criteria, it certainly could be granted without substantial detriment to the public good or substantial detriment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. I think the key here is the applicant is proposing single-family detached dwellings, which exceed the minimum lot requirement of the R75 district. With respect to the substantial detriment of the public good, I would just like to share my screen to give you neighborhood context. This was not an exhibit submitted with the application, so therefore I think this would be A3.
Correct.
A3 is the township zoning map sheet for this specific area, which was updated January 1st, 2023, as per the map. What this map shows is the Block 603, the surrounding areas that are in the R75 district. The area in gray is not in the R75 district. The single-family section, this is in the R10. Here you have the triangle where the Dunkin' Donuts is, and then you have the other commercial uses on Washington Avenue. The subject properties for the subdivision are here in the salmon color. I would like to note, as you can see, the yellow color denotes properties that do not meet the lot frontage requirement of the district. Roughly 65% of the 80 lots that are not subject of this application do possess a lot frontage which is less than the zone requirements. So what the applicant is proposing is certainly in keeping with the established development and land use patterns of the area. I also feel that this variance can be granted under the C2 criteria, where hardship need not be demonstrated, what must be demonstrated that relates with specific piece of property. Here you have Blocks 603, Lots 3 and 78, which are in excess of the zoning ordinance requirements with two existing single-family detached dwellings. The applicant must also demonstrate advancement of the purposes of zoning of the municipal land use law. In this case, the applicant's proposal certainly advances purposes, A, to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use and development of lands in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. That's done by creating a new single-family dwelling built to current techniques and codes. Additionally, it advances purpose E to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities. The proposed subdivision is an appropriate population density far in excess of the land areas required by code. Moving on, it promotes purpose G to provide sufficient space and appropriate location for a variety of residential uses to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens. And then lastly, the applicant's proposed lot line, and I'll share my exhibit again. So the applicant's proposed lot line continues along the northern side properties of Block 603, creating a continuous lot line throughout the entire, that entire side of the block, which promotes purpose I, desirable visual environment and creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. As with the C1 variances, the C2 variances can also be granted without substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance or substantial detriment to the public good.
Thank you, Mr. Graviano.
Are there any questions of this witness from the members of the board? Then I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the public who would like to ask a question of this witness? Would you indicate by raising your hand on your computer screen?
No one, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Close to the public. Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, that concludes our presentation of witnesses. You know, without repeating the testimony, we would ask that the board consider granting the application with the conditions that have been noted in the Hinterstein and the CME reports, as well as the additional conditions mentioned by the mayor, Ms. and Dawn. And, you know, I think overall, you know, even though we have a few variances that are required here, I think the proposal fits in well in the neighborhood. Mr. Druaga had testified that the house, the proposed house, is compatible with the area. And for all of those reasons, we would ask that you consider granting the application.
Thank you. Members of the board, you've heard the application and all the testimony. What is your pleasure at this time?
Madam Chair, if I just may add another caveat, and Mr. Barlow, I want to make sure that if we approve this application tonight on the condition that the issue with having pertaining access to the driveway on West Seventh be discussed with consultation with Mr. Fletcher and the county engineering department, as well as us to something amicable.
Certainly. I think that's in everyone's best interest, Mayor.
We have a motion.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I will make a motion to approve this application, provided that the applicant does agree to the recommendations of the professionals as laid out and adheres to the testimony and agreement of those, taking into consideration the mention of the county and getting that situated there with the notch and the use of the driveway there, making sure that county space is not paved over, just the driveway. And also too, to make sure that this applicant is 100% aware that as the mayor pointed out, if that situation with the county engineer is not, you know, settled by a certain time, and if that road goes to construction, there's going to be a moratorium. And the idea here is to make sure that the applicant adheres to all of the requirements, you know, really by the time that they lock up the construction of the house, the new subdivided piece. So I will make that motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Madam Chair, Dawn Corcoran, I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Clarkren?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Jackins? Excuse me, Mr. Hamid?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
I get outside with. With that, item thirteen is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, Reverend Kenny, some more?
Thank you.
Second. Councilwoman Cahill?
I got you, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Hearing none, the most, the meeting is adjourned.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.